Okay, you should be good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the work meeting for the Cottonwood Heights City Planning Commission for this Wednesday, April 7th, 2021. We'll start with our determination for an anchor location pursuant to Utah Code annotated 52-4-2074. The Chair of the Cottonwood Heights Planning Commission hereby determines that conducting any meeting of the Planning Commission within 30 days after this date at an anchor location presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. Excuse me, it is well recognized that a global pandemic currently exists related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, which has the potential to overwhelm Utah's healthcare system. Therefore, due to the state of emergency caused by the global pandemic, I find that conducting a meeting at an anchor location under the current state of public health emergency constitutes a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at the location. So I think most of us are pretty accustomed to the Zoom meeting format. If you're not and you've joined us, thank you for being here. We typically don't have public comment in our work session. We will in our business meeting, which is the meeting that starts at 6 o'clock. So if you're present and have vested interest in an item on our agenda, we may ask you questions, but we don't have the involvement until our business meeting. So with that, we'll run through quickly our agenda for the work meeting and then turn it over to city planners to introduce the items and give us some background. On our agenda this evening, we have two, well, three, three items, Project CUP-20-016, which is back on our agenda to review and take possible action on request from Thurman Dresden on behalf of Joe, which I've already said his name wrong last time. Because Siglio, maybe whoever's been working within the planner can pronounce his name for me.
I think it's Cochamicklio, but I also could be doing it wrong, so I apologize to Joe if he's listening.
Thank you very much, Sam. And they're looking for a conditional use approval for a bed and breakfast at 6632 South Highland Drive in the residential office zone. Our next item of business is Project SUB-21-001, which is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a request from Tamara Ellsbury and guarantee for a subdivision amendment or proposed changes to Lot 76 of the existing Stevenson Heights subdivision. And our last item, which has been an open item for several months on our agenda, is a public hearing to receive comments and take possible action on a city-initiated proposal to adopt the Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan as an addendum to our general plan. So with that, I will turn it over to the planning staff to introduce these items and give us the background.
Great. I'm going to start off and we'll go through the CUP 20016 first. And so this we have seen once before. As a bit of a refresher, this project is a conditional use. And request for approval of a bed and breakfast at 6632 South Highland Drive in the residential office zone. And this did appear on the Planning Commission agenda back in January. We'll be talking about it again tonight. And I do have kind of an update a little bit farther in the presentation. So just reviewing ordinance again, bed and breakfasts are allowed as conditional uses in the residential office zone, which is the zoning of this property. City code defines a bed and breakfast as a dwelling occupied as a permanent residence by an owner or renter, which serves breakfast and provides or offers sleeping accommodations. So if we take a look at that definition and then compare it to the narrative that we've received from the applicant, the applicant has confirmed that a permanent resident will reside in the basement of the home and will sign a yearly lease contract. And you'll notice later on in the model motion, staff has included a recommended condition of approval to basically verify that occupancy on an annual basis prior to the business license for the establishment being renewed. The applicant has also confirmed that the permanent resident will serve breakfast for the guests and the floor plan does indicate multiple bedroom areas that can accommodate the permanent resident as well as bed and breakfast guests. A few frequently asked questions when these applications come through. First and foremost, what is the difference between a short-term rental and a bed and breakfast? Mainly, the difference is onsite management. So a short-term rental does not require onsite management. It can be managed remotely with guests just coming and going on their own. A bed and breakfast has that requirement for a permanent resident to live at the property. And again, staff has recommended that the Planning Commission add a condition of approval. If they opt to approve this application, that we verify that permanent residency on an annual basis. And then another question that's frequently asked is, will there be any changes to the building footprint or a new structure constructed? No changes to the structure or the site are proposed at this time. A change of use, like we see with a single-family home to a bed and breakfast, does require a few building code upgrades that will need to be permitted, but those don't affect the size or the stature or the height of the building. And then to give an update on what we've seen since this last was on the agenda, and there were a few concerns that the Commission identified in the January 6th meeting. So the first was the presence of shipping containers at the property. Those have since been removed and we've confirmed that with code enforcement. The second concern was short-term rentals. The applicant has stated that this property is a long-term lease, so 30 or more days, but not a short-term rental. Planning staff coordinated with code enforcement to verify that there's no open cases for short-term rentals at this project. And then Health Department approval. And there were some questions on whether Health Department approval and review was required for a bed and breakfast. We have verified that this is only required if the breakfast is being prepared kind of from raw materials onsite. If the breakfast items are prepackaged, which is what's proposed with this project, Health Department approval is not required. So hopefully those help give just a little update on some of the concerns that you voiced last time. And so this is again more for the next session, but we are recommending approval of this application. Staff finds it to be code compliant and we are recommending the added condition of upon annual renewal of business license, the applicant must demonstrate occupancy within the structure. So that's the information I have to share tonight. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
How does the person who's renewing the business license know that this requirement is there?
Yeah, that's a great question and something that we would coordinate with Sherri Martel, who's our Business Development Specialist. She's the single point person for business licenses to flow through. And I think that could look something like possibly adding a note to the renewal system that we use that flags that that's required. Mike, I don't know if you have any thoughts from an operations standpoint?
No, you're right. We would put a note in our business license database. So it'd be licensed as a bed and breakfast and we'd add these notes right in that file. So every time the renewal goes out, that note appears.
Sam, I know that we can't require based on code. We discussed the parking situation and the, you know, especially with the removal of the shipping containers, so that was going to free up a number of parking spaces. But just at some point, if we do hear from the applicant, I'm hoping just for the sake of their neighbors and being good neighbors that any thing that they can do to try to encourage, trying to keep that, keep the curb open would be, would be great. I know, again, I know we can't require that, but, and I know that wasn't necessarily something we were tasking staff with. But, and thank you for the follow-up on that list. That was a great list and appreciate the remediations that you provided.
Yeah, my pleasure. The applicant did state that they're planning to attend. So perhaps in the next session, if you want to discuss parking with them. We did verify that parking was sufficient based on the ITE generation manual we use. And I do agree that the removal of those shipping containers probably only betters the parking situation. But yeah, something we can chat with the applicant on if you wish.
Do they anticipate putting any signage up at all, designating that it's not just a residential home?
I don't, I don't believe so. It hasn't been communicated to me at this point. Signage in the residential office zone requires approval by the ARC and the Planning Commission. So if that were a component the applicant wanted to look at, it would have to come back and also receive a building permit. And but where we don't have a requirement that bed and breakfasts do have signage, I'm not sure if they plan to incorporate that or not.
Okay.
I've got a question on the parking that Dan was talking about. I mean, are there any restrictions for just regular homes with parking on the street?
I think it depends on the area. And single-family homes have to provide two off-street parking stalls. But Mike, do you want to speak to that?
We have an on-street parking ordinance that dictates when and where you can park on the street. It prohibits, I think you can park on a street in the same location for up to 24 hours at a time and then your car needs to be moved. If it's a trailer, a large vehicle that goes down to like two hours. If it's snowing, they can't be parked on the street. If you're close to an intersection, you can't be parked there. So that's regulated in our on-street parking ordinance right now.
No, I understand that, but you know, just going from Dan's comment, you know, about being good neighbors and not parking on the street. So I'm just wondering, you know, is being a regular homes, do they have any restrictions to parking on the street? You know, less than that 24 hours?
No, again, unless it's snowing, but where this is a public street, the, from a land use application perspective, the property needs to provide adequate off-street parking stalls to accommodate the anticipated parking, but if cars are parked on the public street in a legal way, that's not a violation of any ordinance.
Okay.
You know, would it be appropriate though, or could it be appropriate if one of our conditions were that they provide signage on their site? That, you know, parking is, have their own parking signs to show that their parking is in the driveway?
Yeah, I think they have required that of like home businesses before.
Right.
Sounds like that could be, yeah, a condition.
Well, with this being on the corner, you know, it's, and that's one of the concerns I think that Dan's bringing up and the neighbors are having a concern about, that seems like a reasonable condition for us to ask for.
Sure. And I think Dan gave you a thumbs up, so that's good.
I saw that. Good. Okay. Thank you.
Is the Commission ready for me to move on to the next, or are there any other questions on this, this project?
Okay, just before you go on, just a reminder that we looked back at the minutes from, I think, January when this was last in front of the Commission. The public hearing was closed for this item, so it's just discussion and action by the Commission tonight on this one.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so I also will be covering our subdivision application tonight. So this is an amendment to Lot 76 of the existing Stephenson Heights subdivision. It's this lot that corners on Bengal Boulevard and Pamela Drive. It's pretty close to the Mountain View Cemetery. And I think the elementary school up there as well, Canyon View Elementary, so it's kind of right on that main drag of Bengal. And they are essentially proposing to formalize a split to this lot that was already done in 2014 via deed. And we'll kind of get into that a little bit deeper here. But this just shows, I'm realizing this is a little bit zoomed out, so I apologize if it's hard to see, but these two kind of light blue boxes showing the lots that we're looking at tonight. So a little bit of history, again, these parcels were originally a single property, which was Lot 76 within the Stephenson Heights subdivision that was recorded in 1954. Then in 2014, the lot was split into two parcels with a county deed, a quitclaim deed. But this was never reviewed or put through a city process. It was just processed through the county and split it into these two existing parcels. Bringing us now to this year, the applicant is attempting to formalize this existing lot split that was done via a deed. Attempting to formalize that through the subdivision amendment process, which is required anytime you're amending a previously subdivided lot, such as Lot 76. The proposed amendment does not alter the existing property lines that were created with the deed. It just attempts to formalize it through a subdivision amendment. So that is kind of the history on this. It's a bit of a unique situation. It has gone through staff review by all the typical reviewing departments, looking at some of our zoning development standards. We see that both lots meet the 8,000 square foot minimum for the R18 zone. Both lots meet the 70-foot lot width requirement. Looking at kind of the two lots side by side, Lot 76A is what they're calling it, and this lot has an existing home on it. This lot does meet the maximum 50% lot coverage standard. Lot 76B doesn't have any home on it now. It's vacant, but would need to meet the same requirement if it's ever built on. And then we'll serve letters from water and sewer providers will be required prior to final approval of the plat to confirm utility service. Now, looking a little bit closer at setbacks specifically, I'm going to address this lot by lot. So looking again, starting with Lot 76A, which is the lot on the left where we see this existing home footprint. And this existing home, which was built in 1954, doesn't meet the corner side setback. So if you see where the red line is shown, measuring about 13 feet or 12.7 feet, that by current standards should be 20 feet, so that setback is non-conforming. The lot also contains a non-conforming accessory structure, which predates the city's incorporation and has been there prior to 2005. The proposed subdivision amendment doesn't increase the degree of these non-conformities as it doesn't affect the current placement of lot lines. Furthermore, lot lines adjacent to non-conforming items. Looking at Lot 76B, which is on the right, and this is, this is free of a main home. It's a vacant lot. There's no main structure. Any future structures will need to meet the current setback requirements in fall, and those are shown accurately on the preliminary plat that was provided. There is an existing shed on this lot kind of in the rear, and that will need to be removed prior to approval of the final plat as our code has a stipulation that you can't have an accessory structure before you have a main home. That gives a bit of an overview on the setback picture. We have received one public comment on this application and this comment was forwarded to the Planning Commission yesterday in advance of this meeting. And the comment related largely to concerns over the interaction or the relationship between this application and the CCNRs for Stephenson Heights. As a reminder, CCNRs are civil agreements, private agreements that the city doesn't enforce through our standards or processes. And that was the general nature of the concern that was submitted. This project is on the agenda for a public hearing this evening. So we'll, you know, get to that in the next one. And then just looking ahead at staff recommendation, staff finds this application to be code compliant as outlined in the staff report and is recommending approval of this project with the condition that all subdivision requirements be met and all departmental comments be addressed before we approve the final plat. So with that, are there questions from the Commission?
Yeah, I've just got a couple of questions and when I read the letters, there are two issues. I had a question on one, they said that they owned the lot and they don't agree to this?
So the comment that we received, let me go back to an overhead view here, came from the owner of Lot 76A, expressing concerns again over this application and what's required through CCNRs, which again, isn't something enforced by the city. We clarified and spoke with Shane, and Shane, if you want to jump in at any point, go ahead, that as this application does not alter property lines past what was previously done in 2014, that formal consent isn't required.
So did they own 76A and 76B?
So one owner owned 76A, and that was the individual that provided that public comment. The applicant owned 76B.
Okay, because I must misunderstood the letter saying that we own the property and they're trying to make changes.
Sure. Yeah, it's kind of a unique situation. So yeah, I'll try to clarify any questions you've got.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Commission on this project?
I guess I have one, and maybe it is for Shane. It's, you know, so presumably the owner of 76B sold 76A to this current owner. Is that, so is there something we need to understand with the quitclaim deed versus the subdivision? Because I'm not quite clear on why this now comes up.
Is that question directed to me?
Yeah.
What happened is the owner, the person who apparently still owns Lot 76A, just divided Lot 76B off via a deed. That is not a legal subdivision. And so what is happening now is the applicant, the owner of Lot 76A, is now going back and trying to formalize that division by amending the subdivision plat. So that is why this is before you, but no, we, the city does not. Getting a lot off is not an appropriate way to subdivide a property, I guess is what I would say here. So the applicant is trying to cure that misstep through the application that's before you.
Thanks Shane, that's sort of what I was understanding, but yeah.
No, I'm more confused.
So quick clarification, so the applicant owns the vacant lot, which is 76B, and until very recently owned both lots. Sold off the lot on the left here that has the existing house to the person that submitted public comment. But the lot split, the lines, as you see them there on the screen, that was done in 2014. At that time, it should have come through the city because this whole corner property was a lot in a platted subdivision that requires public hearing. But it didn't, and I think where they are now is they'd like to sell off 76B, but there's no building entitlement on that lot because it was never properly subdivided through the city process.
Sorry, I had the lots confused.
Yeah, no problem.
It's a confusing situation and it's definitely a lot to keep straight, but that's also how I understand it, Mike.
So do I understand right that the owner of 76A is resistant to this?
The owner of 76A is who submitted that public comment, expressing concerns as I interpreted them largely relating to CCNRs in place for the existing subdivision, the Stephenson Heights subdivision that was done in 1954.
So they bought the lot, they bought the property seeing where the property lines were, and do they just think it was going to be a vacant lot forever? And?
It's hard to say where staff isn't, you know, typically heavily involved with real estate transactions, but it does look like the sale took place in early 2021. So that would have been, you know, well after the lot was split via deed. So seemingly, it would seem that the applicant or the owner of 76A, you know, was aware of where the property lines fell. And again, this application is not proposing to change those property lines.
But what's the deal with the applicant wanted to make his own subdivision?
The applicant, I believe is now.
Or here, or is that?
The applicant is attempting to kind of retroactively formalize this lot split through the subdivision amendment process, which is really the ideal way that they should have split the lot in the first place. They didn't, they did it through a deed and are now putting it through the subdivision amendment process to formalize that split, which I believe, as Mike said, comes from the intention of wanting to confirm that the unbuilt lot is in fact buildable. Because since it was split through a deed, we never reviewed the split. And now that's what staff is doing is reviewing it and we have found it to be compliant with our codes. It's just kind of happened in an unconventional way.
Dan, Shane, or Mike, I understand that, you know, it's not our purview to enforce CCNRs. But it's interesting to me, I'm concerned. And I hope it wouldn't be precedent setting that if any homeowner in any, under the jurisdiction of a CCNR becomes discontent, that they can take their large lot and go through this process and then after the fact say, well, we've already subdivided it through the county and now I want to create my own subdivision because I actually don't like my HOA. I worry that this basically allows you to, you know, secede from the union at any point if you decide you don't like how the show is being run.
Stop, stop. Well, the, the union, I think you're referring to there is the HOA, which again, that's very clearly, and we've set this precedent many times, the city does not get into enforcing CCNRs or private rights. So we would not allow a property to be constructed, a home to be built on that eastern lot until it goes through this process. So they can't get around any sort of city procedure here, and they really should, like we said, should have done this in 2014. We didn't notice the nature of the complaint is the CCNRs from 1954 in this case require a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet, but the, both lots here are under that. So the, the public comment, the property that was purchased there that is submitting this concern, that lot also violates the CCNRs and that's just something, we can only look at city code here. And that's how we've always done it with, in these situations.
Mike, the concern I have has nothing to do with what the, what the claim was of the violation of the CCNRs. It's more the fact that you've created your own little subdivision that is a property owner that any property owner in Cottonwood Heights has the ability to subdivide if the lot size allows for it.
That, yeah, they do. That's correct.
So do we advise people who come in with a proposal like this one? That the Planning Commission is not going to enforce the CCNRs so that they're not disappointed when they get to the meeting?
We do. And in corresponding with the individual who submitted that comment, that was clarified prior to some middle of that comment.
Yeah, you know, the other thing for me that's helping me to understand a little bit more about maybe what direction we might want to go on this one is the fact that this person who's having the issue bought the property in 2021.
That's what the record of conveyance shows me is 2021, yes.
Well aware of where the property boundaries lie, even though there still needs to legally be some, another step taken.
I don't much like the way that this has occurred. Trying to subdivide by deed and then cure the problem after, after the fact. But I think I have told myself, if they had come in at the front end, I think that it probably would have been, would have been approved. Both of the lots are conforming and so I think this probably, my guess is this probably would have sailed through subdivision amendment process if they had come in and done it properly in 2014. And so I guess I'm thinking as much as the process is troubling, ultimately, we probably end up in the same place that the Planning Commission would have found acceptable six or seven years ago if it had been done properly. That's for the Planning Commission to decide, however.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on this one? Okay, thank you, Sam.
Yeah, of course. And I think that wraps up my projects for the evening.
Thank you. And then do you want to give us, or we can, either way, Andy, if you're with us, whoever's presenting the, the parks and open space updates?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief update. Can you all see my screen here?
We are, yes.
So as you mentioned before, we've seen this for the last couple of months. And so there haven't been any major changes to the plan, but we did incorporate some of the recommendations from the Commission from the last meeting as well as just kind of tidied up the documents, got, you know, updated the maps and stuff to higher resolution. So just to scroll through, I'll point out a few of the updates that you haven't seen yet. We've got a new map here for the executive summary. We did our best to include all of the parks, trails and open spaces recommended. It's kind of hard to see because there's a lot, but we do have other maps throughout. But we wanted to try to incorporate in one or two pages here just the main ideas of the plan and then one comprehensive map showing everything. So that has been updated since you last saw. So that um has been updated since you last saw it. I think the rest of this is all the same. Uh, maybe just switched out some of the pictures for higher resolution. But none of the content has changed. And then moving through to the specific recommendations, again, the maps have now been updated to. Higher resolution maps with legends, scales and a north arrow. This is the current open space, existing open space. I don't think anything changed on that map. Future open space map, I think. Is the same except on previous uh versions of this. We did not have this Dover Hill. The LDS church property just off of Wasatch, so that's been included on this final version. Um, the existing trails map stayed the same. We did. Uh, bring in some descriptions of natural and urban trails with some images here to give a sense of. What the idea these maps are trying to convey is, which is that the green lines are usually unimproved. Generally dirt, just natural trails, and then the orange lines are like what we see on the Big Cottonwood Canyon Trail. Um, more improved or paved, so people with strollers or bikes can also use the trail. For the future trails, um, we've just kind of consolidated what was previously like ten pages. On the older drafts, fit those all in, and then again, have an up-to-date map. Showing the urban and natural trails proposed, as well as possible trailhead locations for all of the trails. And this one, as you know, there's a lot, and so that's part of why we've incorporated this idea of showing planning areas. So we can dive down into specific neighborhoods and look at what's being proposed. So these again are not much changed. I think Highland Drive was added as a response to. Recommendation from last month's meeting. Um, but other than that, I think everything's the same. We've just got the higher resolution maps, so. Um, I know that we've already seen the interactive map and that's still online. That's got the same information. But the PDF now before, they were pretty low resolution. Now you can zoom in pretty good and see. What's on the map for each neighborhood. And then I'll just scroll through here. We have the implementation section. Sorry, while this loads the pages. Um, but we did add in something about, I think, one of the comments last month. Was to make sure that consideration was given to projects that were regional. Uh, projects. And so through the implementation section, we have really what's just a list of questions to consider for the city council. Or for yourselves as the planning commissioners, when considering what projects to give priority to, to consider the context. The scenic elements of the project. Um, things like price, you know, is is there an opportunity for working with a landowner, getting a good price on something? What environmental, historical, educational benefits would a project provide? And I think we added in. Just to consider if the project is included in county or regional master plans. And then uh funding strategies. I I don't think there have been any changes there, but just to outline. How these projects will take place. Again, for those listening, this is not a specific approval of any certain project. But general uh guidelines for future policy decisions by the city. As uh money is available in our city general fund in our budget process. Or through fees or bonds, if the city council is interested in exploring those as funding options. Those are strategies to consider. And then, of course, there are a number of grant programs, federal, state and county grants. That city regularly applies for for these types of projects. As well as potential for private donations or some of these to be. Built or developed as uh larger development and redevelopment projects come through, so. That's the end. I think most of you are pretty familiar with what's contained in here, but those are some of the updates. So I'll scroll up to the summary page and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We anticipate that the city will make a bid on the property that contains the burnt church.
I might uh let Mike answer that one if you're still on.
I am. We're very interested. We submitted uh multiple letters to the church administration on that property. If you want to. I'm happy to talk offline with you more about that as well, commissioners.
Thanks, Mike.
Church, is that going to be the name of the park?
It should be the name of the park.
And documents getting easier to look at, uh, which is nice, and I think hopefully you'll get those kind of comments from the public that are engaging with it as well. It really um starting to feel like the ideas are getting consolidated and it's it's easy to. Looks like a little easier to navigate and understand what what the plan is, which is fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, we cut out and reorganized a lot, so that was the intent. Appreciate you noticing that. And then, as I mentioned before and we've gone over, we do have that interactive map too, which I think. Contains mostly what's in this executive summary, but has that interactive nature, which is kind of nice for people looking. In specific areas.
Once again, staff exceeds expectations.
Andy, I I love the map. I love the interactive map. I and I love the additions to the strategy section. I hope, I hope as we go along, a lot of those. Um, you know, potential places are close to um corporate folks or neighborhoods. That um those those partnerships, if there's, if you guys have thoughts um from a staff standpoint. In terms of what those potential partnerships could look like on the outward facing portion, I think those are are important ways. That people can see that if a neighborhood or a or corporate donor, um, wh- what would that, what would that look like? You know, I mean, that um, even even if it's like a pro forma type of a thing where you just, you make up a project or something like that. I just uh having that in our hip pocket, uh, just that last project that we did last month. Um, going along the uh little Cottonwood Creek, um, that that property owner, um. The the stuff right along the creek would be such a great thing for them in terms of their value and, you know, the ability for us to. Tax some things on to either end of it. They would end up probably paying for the lion's share of it, but just just things like that to say, okay, listen, this is what it could look like. Through X Y Z neighborhood in a residential area or X Y Z neighborhood neighborhood through a commercial area. And uh, I mean, not, I'm not talking about anything elaborate, but um just kind of the the what ifs. Um, I feel like we're headed more and more that direction on the strategy, and the more you kind of lead people to, hey, here's what. This could be in your neighborhood if you wanted. Um, this is what it would take. We could come up with some public-private partnership and uh. You know, let let people come up with some solutions on their own, so it doesn't all have to be funded out of the general fund. I hate for us to just say, well. Hopefully someday when our ship comes in, we'll be able to fund all these projects. So looks fantastic, though, just so you know, I I love what it's turning into.
Thank you. I I think that the uh Parks Committee. Is uh is going to be doing a lot of work along the lines of what you've just suggested with coordinating how we can do. Donations from the public in general and forming partnerships with maybe larger corporations or something like that. So we definitely want to explore that wherever possible.
Yeah, I think a a good example, and we can move on, is the, obviously with donations and private partnerships, they all have to follow certain government procedures. But we really do need to think creative on these, and I think that the Utah Open Lands Partnership, you know, late into twenty twenty was a good example where. Multiple cities donated to preserve that land and private donations, and then Utah Open Lands as a nonprofit came in and. We'll we'll be looking for any creative way possible to to implement as much of this as we can. A lot of that starts with grants, but there may be other options out there that that we'll always press for.
Hopefully you're exploring one right now with the Dover Hills property. Institutional institutions can donate too, right?
Right.
You mean the burnt church?
Yes.
Right.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll, I'm sure, have more discussion, hopefully, um, have some public engage as well uh in the business meeting. I would entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. We will reconvene at six o'clock uh for our business meeting on the next Zoom meeting, so um any public, you'll have to re-log in. And we'll re-log in and start again in our business meeting at six.
I was gonna mention too, for everybody, I don't know if your screens are showing the transcript that's coming up of people speaking. Um, but you can turn it off if it covers the slides. Um, I I think the Zoom screen now shows like a live. Transcript of what's being said, and if it bothers you, I think you can right-click on it. Or actually, you can click on live transcript at the bottom of your screen and turn it off if it's disruptive. Just wanted to tell everyone.
I find it entertaining when Mike Johnson said off-street parking, parking, it said Austrian parking. Kind of creative.
We'll have to think about what that might look like. Um, maybe a yak. All right. Be all in a little bit.